...got bit by a dog.
Oh, really?
Says it's a little dog. I said, "Not the size, it's the size of bite."
Bite, I know. Ready? Okay. All right, if we can get everyone to take their seats, we'll get started. Call to order the meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, April 8th, 2019. If we could just have some quiet in the chamber so we get started. With that, I would ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer.
Alderman Brunelli.
Present.
Alderwoman Cavallo.
Here.
Alderwoman Cato.
Present.
Alderman DiGio Vincarlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Giacomi.
Here.
Alderman Kula.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Napoli.
Here.
Alderman Nujain.
Present.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Penaruski.
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. With that, the next item on the agenda would be public speaking. Anyone wishing to address the board, please sign up with Mr. Conway, the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record when you begin to speak. There's a five-minute limit, and I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff, if you call the first speaker.
First speaker tonight from 11 Steuben Street, Lawrence V. DePillo. Lawrence DePillo, 11 Steuben Street. I left you a couple of handouts. And the first item on the agenda is item number six, an ordinance delaying the demolition of structures to allow time for historic preservation efforts. You know, certainly, you've had a number of speakers before you asked them for this ordinance change or addition, and certainly believe that it should be supported, and I think tonight you're going to be setting a public hearing for that ordinance. So with that, I'm sure you'll get some good public input to go with what Corporation Council has already put together. The other item on your agenda is number seven. And this is where there's a substantial increase in the water project. By that, we're talking about the Tiger Grant, I guess, what's happening down there. And it seems that there's an amendment number two. Well, the contract was originally bid out at $912,500. And then there was an amendment, which is what this city's famous for, $65,823.48. And now there's an amendment number two for another $1,216,625. I don't understand those kinds of monies in the amendments. I'd ask how this thing was bid in the first place, and whether or not, if they completed the Phase One, this should go back out to bid, not simply allowing somebody to more than double the price of the original contract. We're talking over 140% over the initial contract, and if you add the two amendments, number one with the original, it's more than 124% increase. You having those kinds of amendments? I think it's time to send that back out to bid. And when I see these amendments, something comes to mind, and that's that cartoon that I've left with you. And whenever I see these, I ponder that, and hopefully you'll ponder that as well. Because what I see in other communities like Prospect and Watertown is people finish the projects on time, on budget, and if not, they find themselves in Superior Court, giving money back to the town. In Waterbury, it seems to be a given. Just bid it, and then just keep adding on. Keep that cartoon in mind. And thirdly is number eight, which is our wonderful train station. So I left you a picture of the four major train stations here in the city, here in the state. And if you look at it, you have Hartford Union Station, very nice station, looks very similar to our newspaper building. And then we have the New Haven Railroad Station, which all of us are familiar with. And if you turn it over, you look at the Stanford Transportation Center, the way that that is set up. And the last one is the picture of Waterbury's train station, a sign saying "Waterbury" on a fence next to the recycle bin. That's the Waterbury's train station. Now, we're going to spend supposedly over $1,800,000 to pave the parking lot. You know, and they talk about in 2014, we tore down the Snet Building. Well, we did. And we tore down the Snet Building to build a transportation center. Where's the transportation center? And then there was talk about, well, there's the baggage compartment next that's part of the newspaper building. Well, that's going to be completely refitted with seating and with the ability of people to get tickets. That's not in here.
One minute, Mr. DePillo.
So we're going to spend the money, we're going to fix the parking lot, and then maybe in the future, tear everything up so that we could do something at that facility that we were promised quite a number of years ago. And in addition to that, it's $1,008, 80% federal and 20% state, but it's not. The state is capped at $1,642,000 on a project that's $1,008,000. Everything over $1,642,000 is paid for by us, the citizens of Waterbury. That's the cap from the state and feds. So take a good, hard look at that Dilbert cartoon. There's more fact sometimes in satire. Thank you very much. Next speaker from 30 Madison Street, State Representative Reyes Jr.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Good evening, Board of Aldermen, President Penaruski, and esteemed colleagues of the Waterbury Board of Aldermen. My name is Harold Reyes. I reside at 30 Madison Street, and I came here today to talk of item number six on the agenda, which is the ordinance delay. And I'm just going to read my letter here. I want to express my strong support for the establishment of a demolition delay order in the city of Waterbury as one of the oldest municipalities of Connecticut and a role as the historic manufacturing center of our state. It is imperative that we protect historical structures that are currently demolished without second thought. According to the Connecticut Trust for Historical Preservation, Waterbury is one of the few municipalities in the state without a demolition delay ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance is a great example of which is the city of New Haven, is to impose a 90-day waiting period before granting a demolition permit, excuse me, for any structure designated for, excuse me, for any structure designated for historically significant, the demolition, excuse me. The demolition delay ordinance informs the community of pending demolition permits and provides a property owner time to explore alternatives to demolition that could result in the preservation of historically significant places. The result of this is, excuse me, the result of this is encourage preservation, rehabilitation, and reuse of historic places, promotion of the cultural, economic, social, and general welfare of the city, and increase property values for the neighborhoods surrounding these landmarks. I also am a proponent of the establishment of the Historic Preservation Commission to carry out the purpose of the ordinance. The commission ideally would be made up of six members from the Neighborhood Council Association and/or representative of the Board of Aldermen as a liaison, a representative of the Matic Museum, and a representative of the Chamber of Commerce as a, all stakeholders here in the city of Waterbury, and that would have greater interest in preserving these historically sound buildings that could be salvaged. We are a city of full historical and culturally significant buildings, most of which unfortunately have fallen into disrepair and neglect. The issue of the historical preservation has been put in the spotlight after demolition of the former Trinity Episcopal Church, a structure that was well over a century-old, was actually 140 years old, and a cultural landmark in our city, and in my estimation should never have been taken down. Though it is too late to save the church, demolition has opened up renewed interest in historical preservation with the residents of Waterbury. The goal of this demolition delay ordinance is not to discourage construction or our revitalization of this great city, but to encourage property owners and residents to acknowledge that these buildings are part of Waterbury's culture and draw. By allowing adequate time for public input, we can ensure that the demolition decisions are not made to the detriment of our good neighborhoods. Sign, Harold Reyes. And I just would like to see, because we have a few buildings that are already on the scope, we've been talking about the Spears now at the Shrine of St. Anne's. I know that the property at St. Mary's Grammar School is also on the radar. These are historical buildings, and I would like us to see us considering alternative methods to probably salvage in some of those buildings, if not all of them. And I know that the mayor has already put in some thought as to what to do about the decaying spires at our Shrine of St. Anne's. I'd just like to offer my input and to hope that the Alders would not only pass the commission, but put together a commission of stakeholders that would move this city forward. And I thank you, Mr. Penaruski. Thank you very much.
Next speaker from 176 Hadad Road, Laurie Savino.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know why I signed that. I just don't have anything different to say. I am here to support the demo delay ordinance with several other people, and I want to thank you for having it on the agenda and that we're going to move forward with this. And just to let you know that people are still very committed to this and very interested in this. We are corresponding a lot. We have lots of people by email. And I've driven around the city since then, and there are so many beautiful structures in this city. And the demo delay, just again, it's not to save every building, but it's to give us the opportunity to not let something happen like that happened with Trinity again. And with that, I thank you and thank you for your service.
Just before you go, would you just state your name and address?
Oh, did I miss that?
At the beginning, that's okay.
Laurie Savino, 176 Hadad.
Thank you. Mike kicks me under the table whenever people forget to say it, and I don't mention it. And he's got a bad foot, so it's not good to see that.
Thank you.
Next speaker is from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. First of all, I would ask that you guys pass the train station project. It's a project that's been on the radar for a while, the mayor and his team have been working hard on. I would hope to see it done. I have a lot of relatives that come in when they fly into New York, and they always use the train. It's a heavily used train, especially on the weekends, so I would ask that you move this along. And since we're talking about projects, it was noted here tonight about amendments. That project that the speaker was talking about had been put on hold when they found some artifacts along and was stopped because they wanted to make sure that there wasn't a historical place to it before they continued with the construction. Now, when you do that and the studies get done, it takes time. People want things done thorough, they want to make sure everything's done right, and in doing time, it also happens to raise the construction rates. Of course, we would have to do an amendment to get the project up to where it should be again. And to say that this city doesn't bid is ludicrous. Everything we do here in the city gets bidded. And since this administration came in, one of the biggest projects that this administration took on was the Public Works Facility that happened to come in on budget and happened to take the advice of both sides of the aisle when there was talk about expanding it. And people made their opinions known, and the administration worked hard with it, and we have a state-of-the-art facility that people even driving by, it's a centrally-located facility that our residents can go to instead of going from place to place to place, not to mention places that were falling into disrepair and putting us in liability with our employees with the rented facilities that we were using at the time. So this constant innuendo and saying that the city's not following the law, I got to say that we have one of the most professional Corporation Council offices that we've ever had before, works hard, very hard at what they do. I was a little shocked and disappointed at the paper article yesterday. You know, unfortunately, we live in a society now where, you know, some people tend to come out and make innuendos and make up fake stories, whether or not it's true. I could tell you for sure, this is one of the most professional women that we have here, working here, and I'm sure that it's going to be found untrue. You know, unfortunately, we live in that society that puts things out there and it's "gotcha." You know, we don't go through due process, unfortunately, anymore, or get the facts. And to see what came out in yesterday's paper was a disgrace. You know, so I would like to congratulate them because without them, a lot of these projects that we have going here in the city, and a lot of these questions and innuendos that get brought up here, our Corporation Council has to fight and look into and find out that these innuendos that get made on a daily basis are just that, innuendos.
One minute, Mr. Penaruski.
So I would ask that we continue to move forward in this city. I know it's election time, but we need to stay focused here and get things done. So thank you very much.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritton Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritton Road. Before I start talking about anything, I want to give a good shout-out to Alderwoman Cato. We had a Waterbury Human Rights Commission for the first time, a good forum about the Trust Act, and that was April 3rd. I know a lot of people in this room came, and some couldn't make it, but we had a good turnout, and I want to thank Alderwoman Cato for doing a great job. I know Paul came, a few other people came, and it was great. It was inspiring. This is probably, going to have a series of this coming up in the future, and I think maybe, maybe you can have it every four months or something like that. Because the people have to be informed about the Trust Act, and I'm not speaking as Human Rights Commissioner Chairman, I'm just speaking as a Waterbury citizen. I think it's vitally important that people understand what's going on in this country, and they should be involved and well-informed. And there's so many different things that are happening, and whether you're for immigration, against immigration, whether you're for legal people to be here or illegal people to be here, whatever the situation may be, how you feel is, you know, it is what it is. We live in a free country, and this is what people want to come in and talk about, and I'm all for it. So I just thought it was a good idea, and I want to thank Alderwoman Cato for putting this together. There's some other things. I know Larry DePillo, the former Alderman, brought this up, and from Linda T. Whibley requesting a public hearing relative to an ordinance delaying demolition of structures to allow time for historical preservation and efforts submitted by the Board of Aldermen. First of all, I want to say that I'm knowing Linda for like 20-something years, and we never talk about it, but she remembers when I brought my daughter to the meetings when she was little. And Linda, I go way back, and Linda is a Class A lady. She's always been there for me. Every time I need her, I call her, she gets right back to me. I know she's incredibly busy lady. I know she was supposed to show up at our Human Rights Commission meeting, which was the first Monday of the month, we meet in the mayor's conference room, and she came in immensely apologized, and she said, the reason why she was so busy, and she said, "Martin, I am so sorry, I totally forgot about that." Remember Linda? And, but she came in and she didn't have to do that, but, you know, for somebody to come in like that and come in to talk to us about something that, because she was entirely busy, what she was doing, she said that she worked at least 10, 12 hours a day, and I know she puts a lot of time in. And I do have friends, you know, that I know, the attorneys, and some are here too, that I know they just don't go to stuff and get stuff done at work, they have to go home like a teacher and do a lot of paperwork. So that's something that I think that has to be said about Linda. I know I don't have a lot of time, but the reason why I'm bringing this up is because I agree with all the speakers who came up here about historic reservation. You know, for the longest time, I was talking to you people, I mean, I'm trying to comprehend what's going on. I'm not here to knock WDC or nothing. I don't want Mr. Nardozzi to think that because I like him an awful lot. He came before the Waterbury Neighborhood Council, and he gave a great presentation also. But this building across the street, okay, this building's got to be fixed. This building is falling apart, the windows are falling out, and I don't understand, we're going to have a public hearing coming up with a budget pertaining to money that's going to be allocated being spent, and yet you go over there and you look at every window in that building across the street, the Chase building, they're coming out, they're falling out. It's going to be the year 2020. Something should be done. Because I don't understand, I'm not on the Board of Aldermen, but by God, if I was on the Board of Aldermen, I'd be outraged, a beautiful building built over here across the street, and we're not going to spend any money on it. That's got to be done. And then we talk about the train station. And again, Mr. Nardozzi, I'm not knocking you, but you know, we got to...
One minute, Mr. Spring.
I know I don't have enough time. The missus said I talk too much. Well, it is what it is. The train station's got to be fixed up. I agree with Larry DePillo. I mean, we have to do something. I've gone all over the country, as you know, when I do my reenacting, and I say beautiful train stations all over the country, even in Connecticut. We got to have some kind of a restaurant in there or something, or facilities for the people to go to the bathroom, if you will, and, you know, we just got to put something in there because it's so sad to see the people standing outside, waiting outside, in that little cubicle that they wait for the train to come, in all kinds of bad weather. I'm just saying, you know, I am definitely going to be coming to the Board of Aldermen meetings as much as I can. I did want a lot more to talk about it, but unfortunately, I can't, and I really wish you people would give us a lot more, I know you're timing me, give us a lot more time. By the way, before I forget, I went to the city dump with my truck. We're only allowed two dumps a year.
That's...
Two dumps a year in the city of Waterbury. Should be more than that. All the money we're paying in taxes. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker.
Thank you. With that, the next item of business would be the minutes of March 25th, 2019. Is there a motion with respect to the minutes?
Motion approved the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, March 25th, 2019. So moved.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve, and no vote to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries, the minutes are approved. With that, the next item would be to recess into committees. We'll start with the Finance Committee, and then we'll go to the Intergovernmental Committee. Thank you.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number five, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve refunds for the following. Angela Engrat, 57 Blake Street, reversing presumed frozen meter in the amount of $147.77, and Robert Pohl, 34 Judd Street, refunding sewer charges not hooked up in the amount of $2,329.63.
Motion to approve item number five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Standing. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $6,811.35 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. That concludes our business for the evening.
Oh, motion. Motion.
Did she say it? Motion...
Yes.
We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting scheduled for Monday, April 8th, 2019. If I may get your attention, item number three, first item on the agenda. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves a new job specification for the position of Food Service Facilities Manager, as submitted by Scott Morgan, Director of Human Resources, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion that we approve, item number three.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number three, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item number four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen does not, or does not disapprove, the following be appointed to board and commissions, as submitted by Mayor Neil O'Leary. For the purpose of this meeting, the name under letter A, Asia Diaz, has been withdrawn. Ann Marie Corden, Greater Waterbury Transit District, term commencing January 1st, 2019, ending December 31st, 2021. Sabato Di Ambrosi, Board of Public Health, term commencing January 1st, 2019, ending December 31st, 2022. Carlo Palladino, Zoning Commission, term commencing January 1st, 2019, ending December 31st, 2022. John A. Sarlow, Greater Waterbury Cable Council, term commencing July 1st, 2018, ending June 30th, 2020. And John E. Slaven, City Plan Commission, term commencing January 1st, 2019, ending December 31st, 2022. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion not to disapprove, item number four, as amended.
Second.
I have a motion to approve or not to disapprove item number four, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item number six. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen schedules a public hearing on Monday, May 6th, 2019, starting at 6:45 PM, relative to a proposed ordinance delaying the demolition of structures to allow time for historic preservation efforts, as submitted by the Board, and Linda T. Whibley, Corporation Council, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to set up public hearing for item six for May 6th, 6:45 PM, in Aldermanic Chambers.
Second.
I have a motion, which has been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item number seven. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves Amendment Number Two to the Agreement with A1 Engineers Incorporated for the Construction, Administration, and Resident Engineer... A1 Engineers Incorporated for the Construction, Administration, and Resident Engineer Inspection Services for the Waterbury Active Transportation and Economic Resurgence, better known as Water, Project, as submitted by Salvatore Porzio, Project Manager, Bureau of Engineering, Public Works Department, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion that we approve, item number seven.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number seven, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Matthews.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Okay. Could you explain why this has doubled in price?
Yes, Sal Porzio, Project Manager, DPW. This price is a price that we've had all along. But when we put out the, we put out the RFQ and we received the proposal, at the time, we decided just to do Task One.
Okay.
But these numbers, we've had all along. This was part of their original proposal. The number for this, the 1.2 million, that, combined with Task One, constituted what they gave us originally.
So here's a question. Are you going to come back three, four meetings from now asking for more money, or is this just going to be--
No, this is it.
This is projected for the whole project?
No, this is for the resident engineering services.
Yes.
This firm acts as our agent. They're out there every day. They do all the paperwork. They assist with problems. They deal with the neighborhood. And they also deal, they report directly to myself and the rest of, I call Team Tiger, which is Attorney Lynn McHale and Judy Mancini from the mayor's office.
Okay.
In the letter, there will be, I noticed that there's two words missing at the bottom of the first page, and we'll be coming to your, to the board at the next meeting, the plan is, with the construction contract.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sal, I just want to say thank you for the cover letter. It clearly explains everything, and I applaud the administration's efforts to deal with these things in-house. It's a good project. You've done a good job with it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alderwoman Cato.
Thank you. Good evening. Could you clarify why Tasks Two and Three were not included in the original?
Task Two and Three were separated out because those two involved, these two tasks involved some right-of-way activity, which would delay the process. The construction, Task One, was all within the cities right-of-way with the freight street. We also, so that made it a little simpler. And also, it's sort of a learning curve. What we learned from Task One, we're applying to Task Two and Three.
And so this amount, this increase, is going to cover Tasks Two and Three?
Correct.
Both of them?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for your support.
Our next item on the agenda, item number eight. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the Project Authorization Letter, WDC, for the Administration Oversight and General Project Management of the Waterbury Train Station Improvements Project. There's no fee payable to WDC, submitted by James Nardozzi, interim CEO, Waterbury Development Corporation, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion that we approve, item number eight.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number eight, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, item number nine. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the Project Authorization Letter for improvements to the Waterbury Train Station Phase Two, issued under the master agreement with the Department of Transportation, and authorizes a construction project for the parking and pedestrian improvements. Funding is on the Federal Transit Administration grant, 80% paid by the federal funds, 20% paid by state funds, with the maximum reimbursement to the city under the pile being $1,642,000. Submitted by Angela Giuliani, Deputy Corporation Council, Office of the Corporation Council, Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve, item number nine.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item number nine, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
With that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item number one is receiving placed on file. Item two is receiving placed on file. Item number three is on consent to approve a new job specification for the position of Food Service Facility Manager. Item number four is on consent not to disapprove the appointments of Anne Marie Corden to the Greater Waterbury Transit District, Sabato D'Ambrosi to the Board of Public Health, Carlo Palladino to the Zoning Commission, John Sarlo to the Greater Waterbury Cable Council, and John Slaven to the City Plan Commission. Item five is on consent to approve refunds to the following: Angela Engrat, 57 Blake Street, reversing presumed frozen meter in the amount of $147.77, and Robert Pohl of 34 Judd Street, refunding sewer charges not hooked up in the amount of $2,329.63. Item number six is on consent to set a public hearing, May 6, at 6:45 p.m. in these chambers, with respect to an ordinance delaying the demolition of structures to allow time for historic preservation efforts. Item seven is on consent to approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement with A1 Engineers, Inc., for Construction Administration and Resident Engineer Inspection Services for the Waterbury Active Transportation and Economic Resurgence Project, to increase the contract by $1,216,625.44 for a new contract total of $2,194,948.92. Item eight is on consent to approve a project authorization letter to WDC for the Administration Oversight and General Project Management of the Waterbury Train Station Improvement Projects with no fee payable to the WDC. Item number nine is on consent to approve a project authorization letter for improvements to the Waterbury Train Station Phase Two, issued under the master agreement with the DOT, and to authorize a construction project for parking and pedestrian improvements, funding under the Federal Transit Administration Grant, 80% paid by federal funds, 20% paid by state funds, with the maximum reimbursement to the city under the project authorization letter being $1,642,000. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli to approve and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve the consent calendar as read, and no vote will be to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved unanimously. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman Dijo Von Carlo as Chair of the Finance Committee.
Mr. President, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $6,811.35 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Martinez McCarthy and seconded by Alderman Kula to approve the refunds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The refunds are unanimously approved. Before we leave for this evening, there is, under the good of the Order, a proclamation from the mayor with respect to the Week of the Young Child, which reads, "Whereas the Week of the Young Child is an annual celebration sponsored by the National Association for the Education of Young Children, the world's largest early childhood education association with nearly 60,000 members and a network of 50 local, state, and regional affiliates. And whereas the purpose of the Week of the Young Child is to focus public attention on the needs of young children and their families, and to recognize the early childhood programs and services that meet those needs. And whereas, the National Association for the Education of Young Children first established the Week of the Young Child in 1971, recognizing that the early childhood years, from birth through age eight, lay the foundation for children's success in school and later life. And whereas the Week of the Young Child is a time to plan how we, as citizens of a community, of a state, and of a nation, will better meet the needs of all young children and their families. Now therefore, I Neil M. O'Leary, Mayor of the City of Waterbury, do hereby proclaim April 8 to the 12, 2019, as Week of the Young Child." With that, is there anything else for the good of the Order? Alderman Nujame?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to let the public know that the fourth district Aldermen are doing our Easter egg hunt this Saturday at Fair Lawn Park from 10 a.m. to noon. Myself, Alderman Kula, and Alderman Dijo Von Carlo will be hosting it, and all districts will be, are invited. So please come out and have a good time.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none. Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion having been made, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. We're adjourned. Don't forget, Thursday night, 6:30 here, we have the first public hearing on the budget. See you all then. Thank you.